So, yes, Building Committee update. I'm not going to go into all of an exhaustive forum right now, but I'll just give high-level updates on where we are. So, as hopefully everyone here knows, we have a ballot vote coming up on February 1st. Early voting will begin on Tuesday, the 21st, and run through Monday, the 27th. The Times that they will be open, it's on the town website as well as the building website. So this vote is a debt exclusion vote for $4,345,000 and $345,042. And that is for schematic design through bid documents for the proposed Freeman Kennedy expansion. We have another community forum next Tuesday on the 21st. That's going to be 7:00 at HOD, also in the library there. There's also a presentation that will be given by Ingrid, and hopefully a couple of the Building Committee members can be there as well on Wednesday, the 22nd, at the Senior Center here in Norfolk. I will say there has been an uptick in community engagement, which honestly I think is great. And we've been able to compile a relatively robust FAQ that we're going to, I will, you know, kind of bring us through a lot of the questions tonight. I will say that some of the questions, we grouped kind of thematically rather than, you know, verbatim, so hopefully if you don't hear, you know, the exact language you used, you'll hear the themes and we'll get to those answers. I will say also that we're going to be posting that on the Norfolk Building website, those FAQs, and if there are questions that are not answered by us, we tried to be pretty thorough, but, you know, we want people to be as informed as possible, so continue to submit questions. You can submit them to me directly, Madora, Ingrid, I'm sure, we have our Building Committee website, our email, so please, you know, don't be shy. And we'll continue to update and get that information out because we want people to be honestly as informed as possible before the vote. I think that's really important. So what I will do now is take the questions that we received and moderate a bit of a Q&amp;A with Madora and Ingrid, who are both on the committee with me.
And yourself. Don't be shy.
Right. I will also not be shy in adding any feedback that anybody, you know, I feel is needed. So just to kind of move it along, I'll address them to each of you, but you can jump in at any point, so. So the first question is, what funds are being requested and voted on in the special election? And what is the expected impact to the taxpayer if these funds are approved? So, Madora, could you answer that one?
Sure. So, as you just very specifically stated, we, what is currently being requested is, I will shorten it to approximately $4.3 million. The purpose of those funds is to fund schematic design through construction document generation. Ideally, the goal would be that at the end of that, I mean, it's not, it is the stated goal, at the end of the expenditure of those funds, the town would then be presented with a firm construction bid for the completion of the final project in its entirety, similar to the process that was followed for the fire station. So it would eliminate any unknowns about the overall final cost of the project to proceed in two phases. What is included in the process is essentially what it sounds like. It is all of the, we take it from a high-level design at feasibility into the nuts and bolts design of what the process would look like. So the fees include the architect fees, but in addition to that, all of the subcontractors that would be employed by the architect to finalize the design, including civil engineers, landscaped architects, structural engineers, mechanical engineers, building code consultants, an accessibility compliance consultant, acoustical engineers, technology consultants, and, you know, any other, you know, the remaining laundry list of folks who come in to make sure that the building is functioning the way that it needs to be functioning. In addition to that, approximately $900,000, which is, I am remembering that from a document, so approximately is approximately.
Just a little more scrolling.
No water.
Sure.
Notes taken.
Approximately $900,000 is also attributed to the retention and utilization of an owner's project manager as part of the $4.3 million. We are required to retain an OPM, as they're called in shorthand, due to the scope, size, and cost of the project. That is a statutory requirement. The OPM comes in to represent the interests of the town and school district throughout both the design phase and eventually the construction phase, should the project move forward. This $4.3 million is part of the overall soft costs associated with this project. It is not in addition to the projected overall cost of the project, it is a component of the overall projected cost of the project. If this debt exclusion is successful, the average homeowner in Norfolk would see an increase in their tax bill of approximately $170 annually. That reflects only the debt exclusion for the $4.3 million. It is not, it does not, it is a component of what will eventually the entire exposure would be from a tax perspective, but that is just the first step. So I think that answers.
Question number two.
Well, you asked in question number one the same question, but yes, I jumped ahead, and that would be reflected in the fiscal year 2026 tax bill.
Perfect. Thank you. So what is included in the project cost estimate? So we've gotten a lot of questions about, you know, is furniture, technology, overhead, all of that. Ingrid, can you, sure, start with that one.
So the total cost for the Freeman Kennedy expansion project was estimated just in August 2024 at $37.9 million. The estimate was developed in anticipation of the project not beginning until late spring and with the delivery date of the fall of 2027. So it does include in the estimate an estimated construction escalation cost. Additionally, the hard construction costs for the building include all of the costs associated with building the two-story addition to the Freeman Kennedy that connects the back two wings of the school, as well as all of the equipment that would be necessary for a new preschool playground, modifications to the existing roadway. The soft cost estimate, the Madora talked about earlier, includes the design costs for schematic design through the development of construction documents, and that will allow the town to enter with a bid in hand before bringing the project forward so that you know the actual cost. Additionally, soft costs include all of the furniture, fixtures, and technology equipment for the additional classrooms.
Thank you. So we've had a lot of questions over the years and this year about the enrollment growth and the projections that were done. So, Madora, can you talk a little bit about the demographic studies? Because I think you were part of the year for all.
Sure, yeah, that's, that may be aging me, but sure, happy to. So the, there have been three demographic studies completed to date regarding current demographics and future projected enrollment growth in the Norfolk public schools. Initially, an organization called NESDEC completed two studies for us, one in 2019 and one in 2021. Both of those studies reflected and anticipated growth in enrollment, and as we watched enrollment over those years in between the two, we saw it matching fairly closely to what the projections were. More recently, in 2024, as part of the school building committee work that has been done on this issue, a different organization was retained to provide a second set of eyes on the demography, and we retained demographic analytical advisors. So all of the reports that have been generated so far are available on the expansion project website. Findings of all three of the studies have been very consistent. The most recent DAA studies provides demographic projections through 2035 and anticipates an increase of 204 students into the school system over the next 10 years. So the DAA study notes that all children in Norfolk, that not all children in Norfolk typically attend the Norfolk public schools. However, based on an analysis of private and homeschool data that we were able to review and through some surveying that was done, I believe, as well, the study predicts that we will not see an increase in homeschooling and outplacing in the coming years. Approximately 5% of children who would be, school-aged children, thank you, Ingrid, within Norfolk are educated in an alternative setting that has been a consistent number and is projected to remain a consistent number. And typically, we see those school-aged children being either homeschooled or they're receiving private schooling. So, in short, three studies over the past seven years, all consistent with growth, all projecting growth of around 200, you know, additional students over the next 10 years, in addition to the existing student population that we currently have today.
Yeah, and I will say, as Madora said, they are online and they're incredibly thorough, so if you're looking for some dry reading or if you're really interested in stats, I think. So there have been a lot of questions about if we could solve for some of this problem with increasing class sizes or potentially adding paraprofessionals to assist with those larger classes to make up for the difference. Ingrid, can you kind of sure explain our thought there?
So we have looked at this. If we, if the district chose to raise class sizes in grades three to six to the maximum class size of 25 and the maximum class size of 21 in grades kindergarten through two, we would be able to accommodate just under half of the anticipated new enrollment growth. It would require, if we were to choose to do that, it would require that art and music instruction continued to be delivered on a cart at age all of day and would also prevent the restoration of a technology or computer lab at the lower schools. The change in class size also would put Norfolk significantly above all of our neighboring communities who, if you go to the website and you look at our baseline and benchmark report, you can see the average class size in the region is between 19 and 20. Also, if you look across the state, only 25% of elementary students across all of Massachusetts are currently being educated in classrooms above 21.1 students. So Norfolk students would be above all of our regional partners, as well as significantly above the state average. Additionally, we have two major charter schools in the catchment area for Norfolk. Their class sizes are lower than what we would be looking at in Norfolk, and the district would certainly be at risk of losing students to local charter schools. When students exit the district, the state aid and funds for those students follow the student. So we would be at risk of losing significant funding out of the annual operating budget. We could consider hiring additional paraprofessional staff members to support instruction. I think it's important to note, paraprofessional staff are not licensed educators. They, because of that, they are not able to analyze student assessment data, they are not able to design lessons or instruction or interventions for students that might be struggling. And what they, they were blessed in Norfolk that we have some fabulous paraprofessionals that have been with us for a really long time. They deliver instruction that is developed and designed by the classroom teacher. So when you increase class sizes significantly, there's a significant burden placed on the teacher in terms of designing, overseeing the paraprofessional staff, and delivering instruction. Additionally, over the last five years, we've had a really difficult time filling substitute and paraprofessional positions. We currently have three vacancies open for paraprofessionals that we've been trying to hire and staff since September. That's not unique to Norfolk, that is true across this region and area. Again, if we increase all class sizes to the maximum allowable, we would still need to identify new space for an additional 100 students that we are expected to receive in the next five to 10 years. And larger class sizes do negatively impact curriculum and instruction. I know there's a couple of questions that people had around Desi's recommendations for class size. The Department of Ed did put together a policy statement on class size. They were looking at the value return of moving to what they defined as small class sizes, also looking at the original study done years ago, the STAR study on the impact of class size and achievement. In that study, class, small class sizes are defined as 13 to 17, and larger class sizes are 19 to 22. We do not have any classes that qualify as small class sizes. Additionally, you know, just years ago, when I first started teaching, I taught first grade, I had 26 students. We don't deliver instruction the way that many of us received instruction in schools. Most instruction is delivered in small groups. Our new literacy program relies on guided reading instruction. When you have a class of 20 students and you have small reading groups, they're meeting regularly with the teacher. As you add additional students, that adds additional groups. It does decrease the amount of direct instruction students receive on a day-to-day basis from the qualified licensed professionals in the classroom.
I think one point, and I'm not sure that this has been made, but just to, I am not an educator, so I will defer to the data and the feedback from Dr. Allardy on this. I know that this is, the class size issue is something that has been discussed at the school committee level every year since I have been elected to the school committee, and that was in 2018, and I know that it was discussed prior to that. It's discussed as part of the budgeting process every year from the standpoint of it is always a question of, you know, how many teachers will we need to accommodate incoming classes? What will that do to impact the quality and delivery of instruction? This has consistently been a theme, not just around the question of space and demographics and enrollment studies, but just around the overall quality of education that we're delivering as a district, and it is something that the committee has always been focused on. In addition to that, I do want to clarify, as we consider as a building committee and as the committee as a whole was looking at what the need would be to meet current and anticipated growth over the next decade, there is, there's no perception, at least there has not been on my part, that we are moving to a situation where we will have class sizes lower than what we are seeing currently, which are already defined as larger class sizes. We are trying to prevent a situation where they get bigger and bigger and bigger to the point of being unmanageable and to the point where the quality of instruction is significantly impacted. I don't think that we will see in Norfolk a day when there's a class size of, I mean, the small class sizes were 13 to 17. I don't think that that is a thing that is going to happen. The goal of the committee is to, as I said, prevent a worsening of the situation that we are already seeing and to be able to appropriately accommodate all of the school-aged children who show up for class. So, just clarifying.
No, that's very helpful. So there's been a lot of questions around preschool and what we are required by the state to provide and what that means for, I know, a lot of you know, we have a pretty long waitlist in Norfolk to get into preschool. So with the proposed addition of, or proposed expansion of Freeman, will that accommodate parents in town who want to send their children to preschool? And what are the recommendations from the state, or what are we required to do?
Sure.
So currently, we have six preschool classrooms. The proposed addition space would have seven, so there's an additional classroom. We are required by law to provide preschool programming to students as of their third birthday who have disabilities and require that programming. Currently, we have a waitlist of 70 families. Our programs are delivered in an integrated, in an integrated setting, which means that approximately half the students in every preschool classroom are students receiving services through special education. The other half are classified as peer models. With the additional space, we would be able to meet what we anticipate for growth in the preschool population requiring services. We are expecting with that projected growth of 200 students that we are going to see growth in the number of students entering the district at age three who have specialized needs. It would allow us to bring in some additional peer models into those programs. There's a flex space in the design that we could add an eighth classroom or restructure the layout in the next design phase, should we need that eighth classroom, but no, it will not allow all students who have interest into the district. We will not be able to accommodate everyone off of the waitlist, although we hope to move more families in. We are not exceeding the state requirements, we are meeting the state requirements for preschool.
Okay. There's some relatively specific questions around how space is being used, so quickly. How much of the addition is going to be dedicated to administrative space rather than learning space? Ingrid, maybe you can do that.
It's a limited amount. There is, I think the Building Committee did a really thoughtful job of planning how to address this, the space problem that we have in the growing enrollment. The intent is to move the special education office suite over to the building addition and put them in the first floor with the preschool. Under the law, again, because we provide preschool programming for students as of their third birthday who have disabilities, the special education director oversees the preschool programming. So she would serve by moving that office suite as the administrator on site overseeing and managing the early childhood wing. The clerical staff that support the special ed director would also move into that suite and would be responsible for managing entry to the school and all of the clerical tasks associated with that. So without increasing staffing, we are relocating that office. Additionally, there's about four small offices for our speech and language therapist, OT, physical therapist, the district BCBA, that are located in that small office suite, but the vast majority of the space is classrooms for preschool. So seven classrooms and an indoor sensory space, a conference room for parent IEP meetings.
So the next question is about before and after-school programs or SAC. I'll give both of you a break and I'll answer it, since SAC is near and dear to my heart. So at HOD, SAC uses the art room as well as the cafeteria, so they don't have their own space at the Freeman Kennedy. There's a small classroom right off of the gym that is used for that programming as well as the gym. During the day, that program, that space is used for early childhood education or programming through Norfolk Rec, not education. And so sometimes SAC at the Freeman also will use the cafeteria and library, depending on what programming they have going on, but all shared spaces, they don't have a unique space. So, Ingrid, this is one that we've gotten a lot recently. How will the district afford to staff the additional classrooms when the budget is already tight?
Yeah, this is a challenge. So I think there's a couple of things that are important to note. I think at the state level, there's a lot of advocacy around increasing Chapter 70 funding because the cost of education has dramatically increased over the last 20 years, and the formula has not kept up with it. So many, many districts are experiencing difficult budget years because state funding is not matching the growing educational costs. However, what we would be looking at is, as we open in 2027, the new space would not be immediately fully occupied. There would be a few open classrooms. Again, we're building for the projected need in the next 10 years. We anticipate in that first year, we would need an additional full-time custodian to maintain the square footage that's consistent with the ratio that we have now for cleaning staff for square footage. We anticipate we'd need three additional classroom teachers to address the enrollment growth in the general education population. We also know that we would need to increase our current music, art, and physical education staffing, probably by .2, which is an additional day in the schedule, to meet the needs of the new classrooms that we're adding. Over this period of time, between now and 2027, we are projecting an increase of 55 students. And those 55 students, the district receives state aid primarily through Chapter 70. On average, per pupil, we're receiving $3,600, and that's just looking at the last couple of years in state aid per pupil. So an additional 55 students entering the district is expected or anticipated to result in close to another $200,000 of state aid. The new building, again, as far as staffing costs, we think that's going to, with the custodian and all of those positions, it will, again, estimated with the COLA increases with all those positions, the cost to be about $346,000. So $200,000 in additional state aid. We may also be eligible for additional state grant funding. There's grant funding that offsets the cost of early childhood programming, and then some will just be costs that the town has to respond to in terms of the growing population of students that we are educating.
Has the district considered modular units, and would that be more cost-effective? Madora, can you talk to that?
Sure. So, yes, is the short answer, but I will go into more detail. So modular units initially were considered in 2017 as part of the original space study that was conducted. They were ruled out at that point for a variety of reasons. I was not part of that space study, I can't speak to it personally, I was not yet on the school committee. However, as we moved forward through the process and began to identify what options might be available or might be considered to address enrollment and the space needs, at Fall Town Meeting in November of 2023, it was requested and determined that a study, a full feasibility study of modular options would be a more than reasonable thing to do, given the projected costs of a permanent building addition to this structure that we're currently in, and given the additional capital items that the town was dealing with, thinking specifically of increases in taxes to the average homeowner from the public safety building and obviously the fire station that had not yet really come to fruition yet but was being pipelined. So the school building committee was tasked with looking at pretty much any viable option in alternative to a permanent building addition, and specifically enumerated in their charge was looking at modular options. So there were three possible arrangements that were explored for modular solutions, including a two-story modular structure connected to the back of Freeman Kennedy, a standalone two-story located along the back roadway off of Freeman Kennedy. So to orient everyone as to where we are now, that would have been connected basically back past these windows, a freestanding two-story unit back sort of behind this building, generally in that direction. And then the third option was a single-story modular building that would have been located on the front athletic field, so where most of you parked, sort of between the school and where the rec fields are, there is a, an open space, that is where that would have been located. The Building Committee worked with the retained architects through a feasibility process that looked at all three of these options at a couple of different finish levels, so, you know, the relative finishes being what the siding would look like, what the windows would be made of, you know, sort of what the longevity of the building would look like, essentially, the materials associated with those builds. Estimated costs for the modular options that were looked at ranged from $28.5 million to $32.2 million for the lowest level of finishes. Those structures had a life expectancy of 10 to 15 years. And then the range for the higher level of finish that was considered was $30.4 million to $34.9 million for a higher-level finish with a life expectancy of 20 to 25 years. Based upon that feedback, other options that were reviewed, and the projected cost of a permanent building addition, the Building Committee elected to move forward with recommending the permanent building addition priced at $37.9 million, an estimated price, but with a life expectancy of 50 years. The Norfolk Building Committee voted unanimously against recommending a modular solution, based largely on the relatively high cost when compared to a permanent solution, but the lower life expectancy relative to the expenditure of funds.
Thank you. And I know there's a lot of numbers being thrown around, and I want to reiterate, it's all on the website, but we've heard, you know, some people still aren't aware, so we really are trying to get information out as much as we can, so appreciate bearing with us and going through these. So why wasn't only an average of 25% used for soft costs? We can probably take this one pretty quickly.
Sure. Ingrid?
So soft costs, as we talked about earlier, include a number of different items, including design fees, furniture, fixtures, equipment, technology, and contingency funds. Some fees, like the larger fees, like the OPM, are not established because of the process of qualifying, interviewing, and selecting an OPM, and that process hasn't occurred yet. Again, the fees were, the contingencies and fit items, building fixtures, all of that will, is going to be influenced by the design choices made in the next phase, but at this phase of the project, the, we are using an estimate, which is a standard industry estimate between 22% and 25% of the overall cost of the building dedicated to soft costs. We are using the upper end of the range primarily because this addition is being connected to an existing structure. So sometimes there's more unknowns that happen when you're, than you have in a new build, in terms of the connection and ADA pieces. So 25 is the higher-than-average estimate, but we're going with that at this point. This will be refined again as we move into the design phase and an OPM is interviewed and selected.
So as we So, as we've said a couple of times, this is designed through bid documents. So how many bids will be sought? Madora, can you take that one?
So, this will be put out to bid in compliance with Massachusetts State Procurement Law. We don't select a certain number of bids. We put it out to bid, and qualified contractors, construction professionals are allowed to bid on it. This is a qualifications-based process, so the, in the event of multiple bids, you would be looking at working with the qualified lowest bidder. It is not straight low bid. I want to make that clear as well. A project of this scope and size in Massachusetts is governed very strongly by statutes. Chapter one forty-nine is one in particular, but, you know, there are some others as well that dictate how a public project like this can move forward through the bid process. So we would receive as many bids as qualified bidders were willing to submit. Ideally, that would be multiple bids, so that we have an opportunity to review and assess the qualifications of each of the bidders.
So this next one, I know is one that we discussed as a building committee.
I didn't answer the full question. Was that, did that cut?
I think there was a question about what options the town would have if bids came in significantly over what was projected.
Right.
That was me not asking the question appropriately.
Okay. I mean, it's, it is a very appropriate question in any situation, but certainly given the amount of money we're discussing at this point. At that point, because we are breaking the debt exclusion process up into two separate phases, so design through construction documents, and then a subsequent phase relative to the construction bid, should bids come in significantly higher than are being projected? I mean, I put a fair amount of faith in the estimating process, but, you know, obviously, these things can happen. The town would at that point have an opportunity, both at town meeting and again at a ballot, to make a determination to hold on the project if they wanted to. At that point, you know, I mean, we would have spent money on the schematic design. The town would have at its disposal a full set of schematic design and construction documents for a future project, should a future board, you know, elect to move forward with that as a suggestion. But there is, if this balloons to the point where it was something that was not palatable, there is an opportunity for the town to take an off-ramp, I guess. I think that, yeah, that beyond that, that's just me.
And I think the other two possibilities, depending on how much over the anticipated bid price the bids come in, the town could also opt to review and go back to the design phase and see if reductions in scope could occur, if structural or design changes could happen that would result in additional cost savings. You could opt to reduce the contingency fee that's part, but that does increase owner liability. But there are several different pathways that the town could go to consider, either, again, reducing the price or delaying or postponing the project.
Mm-hmm. I mean, and I do think it's fair to note as well, this design phase is where the value engineering process could be taking place as well, to the extent that if it was seeming as though costs might be escalating, there are, you know, through design up until the generation of the full construction documents, opportunities to look at the project and, you know, scale back during design, should it be a situation where we feel that, you know, things might be, for whatever reason, through external contributing factors, costs might be escalating. So.
And just to take the optimist point of view, and it could come in less, and we could be happy.
It could.
So, again, thank you. We discussed this at relative length during the building committee meeting. I don't recall the exact date, but, Ingrid, you did some work on this. So, please speak to leasing space potentially from another town.
Yep. That was another option that the building committee looked at. In order to help us study the viability of that, we did look, we are members of the BIKO Collaborative, which is a regional special education collaborative. There are eighteen members, so eighteen of our neighboring districts are also part of BIKO. The enrollment in BIKO has grown, and in the past year, actually just opening in September, BIKO leased sixty thousand square feet of space from the Walpole Public Schools to move and relocate programs. So we looked at what BIKO ended up negotiating for that lease. There are a couple of different factors. There were quite a few build-out costs, because most of the space available that would be that large is older buildings that are in need of upkeep, you know, in order to meet codes and occupancy requirements. So BIKO did have to spend about six hundred and fifty dollars upfront for renovations in order to make the building meet the required codes. Beyond that, on average, for each of the ten years, the lease of space, and again, they did sixty thousand, was eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually, you know, for each year of the contract. It varies a little, but that's the average. We would only be needing forty thousand square feet approximately, so the lease, you could just estimate from that being between six hundred and six fifty on annual, as an annual cost. However, the other factors that we discussed and considered with that, if we were to consider leasing a third site or a building that is out of town, there are significant additional staffing costs that come into play. So you would need to hire another administrator who would be onsite to oversee the building, a full-time school nurse. You would need to additionally hire two maintenance staff. You'd require to have a custodian in the school during the day, as well as somebody to clean at night, because you can't clean when the kids are here. Food service, so we would have to have the ability to serve school meals during the course of the day, which is a full food service team. Additional costs for transportation, back and forth. Viability too, the district could not move grade, any of the grades from K to six, because then again, you would need a physical education program, you would need a school library, you would need art and music teachers onsite. The only potential that we could consider would be moving the preschool. Again, for six preschool classrooms, there would be significant additional staffing costs. And then on top of that, because we provide preschool as of a child's third birthday, if they have disabilities, almost over fifty percent of our students are receiving speech and language therapy, occupational therapy, physical therapy, or other related services. Our current staff would not have time in the schedules to include travel to a third site and back. So we would have to increase those positions in order to accommodate that, because their schedules are full currently. When you look at all the additional staffing costs, you're looking at one-point-five to one-point-eight million annually. Looking at that as a ten-year lease, you're looking at fifteen to eighteen million dollars to lease space, that at the end of ten years, we still don't have a solution, a permanent solution, to the growing enrollment. So it, the building committee, although they considered that, it seemed a very high price to not solve the situation and in ten years be faced with the same challenge that we're facing existing currently. Additionally, it would require families who are residing in Norfolk paying taxes to live in the town, to have their students educated in an older facility outside of the town. The security questions, concerns, I'll align with that. So that option was ruled out by the committee for both fiscal reasons as well as practical implications.
We are almost there, I promise. So, similar question, but in town. Did the building committee look at the possibility of creating an early childhood preschool program in another location in town that's existing? Ingrid, since similar, I'll answer.
We also looked at that, and we discussed that. The town administrator was part of our building committee. There are very few properties owned by the town that could accommodate that size of a facility. The engineers and architects we worked with throughout this process also indicated that bringing a current facility to existing code for schools is often, renovations are often more costly than a new build. Additionally, a third site would potentially resolve the space problem we have at H-L of Day, but it wouldn't address the projected increase in enrollment and the lack of space at Freeman Kennedy. So we would also have to look at a temporary modular or alternate solution at the Freeman Kennedy School. Cost of two building projects exceeds what we project in the single solution we're proposing. Again, the, a third preschool site would have all of the additional challenges in terms of staffing that we discussed. You would need a kitchen, you would need food service, you would need an administrator, you'd need a nurse. Some of those are difficult to fill, but they're also costly positions. So that was also ruled out.
And finally, as far as the questions that we've received thus far, if the expansion project does not pass, what, how will the district address enrollment growth? Sorry, I'm getting tired.
Well, I mean, I think, sure. If, if this project does not pass, the district will need to continue to seek ways to manage enrollment growth while pursuing, you know, other possible expansion options. I think that anyone who is part of the building committee, but I know specifically, I can only really speak for myself, knows that we have looked at all of those options, and they, they don't provide a cost savings. Is, you know, I mean, that's essentially the issue. In the short term, class sizes would increase. Special subject instruction would continue to need to be delivered on a cart or, you know, not in an instructional classroom, as those spaces continue to be repurposed and utilized for classroom instruction at the H-L of Day school. Similarly, the auditorium at the H-L of Day school has, is being utilized as essentially office space for teachers at this point. So there are not, I mean.
They're all on the stage.
They're, they're all on the stage. So, you know, for any parent of an older child, such as myself, who recalls the day when you would do sort of the big expansive kindergarten memory show, or the Wizard of Oz production that the kids used to put on, those, those don't happen either. Obviously, those are nice to have, not necessary, but just kind of painting the picture. So, in addition to that, at Freeman Kennedy, you would continue to see space, the space crunch continue to get worse as the enrollment growth moves from H-L of Day up into the upper grades at Freeman Kennedy. The maker space and music classrooms would likely need to be repurposed as instructional classroom space, to at least initially try to accommodate that growth. And the science lab, which has already been converted into an instructional classroom, would continue to be used as a classroom and not as a science lab. So, that would be probably in the relatively short term, you know, the first few years. Subsequent to that, the district would need to come back to the town and again have a discussion about how to solve the problem, whether that was modular units that have already been sort of reviewed and assessed, or a second ask for a permanent build addition. Ultimately, with an influx of two hundred and four students into the school district, there is no longer any way to, at a certain point, there is no way to creatively manage or creatively utilize any of the existing space. You simply have no space. And at that point, at whatever point that might come, you would be looking at additional escalations in costs associated with the project, and, you know, the, whatever iteration of the school committee or school building committee might exist at that point, would again come before the town and, you know, be requesting additional funding. It is not, I think, an issue that is going to resolve without a solution.
So, thank you for bearing with us. That is what we have received to date through, again, reaching out to us personally or the building website, but continue, all questions, please continue to ask. Would love to see everybody at the forums, and please educate yourself and vote.
There is one other question that we are working on. There was a question about the operating costs of the new addition. Our facilities director has been working with the town to develop that estimate, because not all of the facility's operational costs are carried in the school budget. But the rough estimate looks like it's about a hundred and fifty thousand to a hundred and sixty thousand for annual operational costs. That would include cleaning products, heat, utilities, all of the general maintenance. And that number, once it's solidified, will be added to the document.
Okay, great. And again, this will be posted on the website, and any more questions, we'll continue to add to it. So please continue to engage, and thanks for bearing with us.
Thank you.